A few questions.
Yes.
I'm wondering about the dining area in the back. Is it going to be partly on town land? And then the parking, which is alongside of the building, which is town owned now, will remain parking, but part of the ownership of the burnt timber and overalls is in that building?
All of the outdoor dining is effectively ceased as of November 1st. What hasn't been decided yet is what will be, what will become of the parking area adjacent to burnt timber. So it will be striped, but it will not be town property or town parking once the transfer is made.
What happens in the future if that wants to get reduced? Town wants to relocate the street access, the parking lot? I'm just, we just recently had a charrette. You know, there was some interest in connectivity and reconfiguration. I'm just wanting to make sure that...
The property, property transfer does not get to the point of the street access to Laner Street. It stops well shy of that.
But it does change the frontage?
It does change the frontage, correct. In early discussions, there were one or two tenants in the burnt timber structure. Burnt timber is just a tenant in there. But there was consideration of moving the outdoor seating to the side of the building as opposed to the rear of the building. Many an instance where there are semi trucks and other delivery vehicles parked in that land anyway. So it's an unsafe place for them to be sitting. So be incumbent on the town at some point to consider revising the parking lot. But this does not remove options for parking in the parking lot.
And does the town not have easements for the sewer lines that are going through there?
Correct.
What's the benefit?
There are no easements.
There are no easements?
Correct.
Madam Chairwoman, one question for the planner. Does the town have any plans of changing the directional arrows on the parking lot? Make it one way in or one way out, or we're going to leave it both ways in and out?
There are discussions about both options, but none of those are present, present this evening.
I understand. Question to the planner. It would be reassuring to know that the town is thinking maybe of making it one way in or one way out rather than the way it is now, which most people use it going in. Few people use it going out, and those who do use it going out are usually looked at with daggers by those coming in because there's oftentimes not very much room for the two cars to pass.
Agreed. I will say for the benefit of the boundary line adjustment, this is probably the eighth iteration of property lines. In discussion between Board of Selectmen and the property owner of Lot 9, there was a strong push from the Board of Selectmen to maintain at least a 30-foot aisle in the parking lot, which would suggest two-way travel.
Mm-hmm.
Every discussion I have been privy to has been a strong suggestion that it be marked in only.
But as long as it's being considered by the town. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the predominant way for a long time was just in, and then a couple years ago, they added the out to it, and I was surprised at that point. But clearly, like Mike says, you, you get a funny look when you're pulling out. And I think so many people were just familiar with just in there. And if you went out the Hux Hoagies Road, you know, that, that's a, that's kind of like a loop now. So I would, I would push for that, and I'm, I'm a little concerned about the setback at the backside. Is that, is that legal?
The line has the slant that it does to maintain the required setback from the above-ground propane tank, and there are no structural setbacks in the C1.
Okay, then, any other questions? All right, entertain a motion to approve this application.
Can we, Madam Chairwoman, can we go back to the, the motion for completeness? Call for a vote on that? We didn't...
No, sorry, sorry about that. Okay. Okay, can we vote on the application of completeness? Where we haven't had a motion and didn't ask for a vote. So everybody in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay.
Happy to make a motion to approve case number 2021-021, tax map 218-008 and 009 for boundary line adjustment with recommended conditions 1 through 3 as proposed by the planner.
Okay, motion has been made.
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, very good. The next application, I need to step down from, and so Mike Hatta will take over.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. The next application is Eastern Lakes Housing Coalition, tax map 176-020-01A, case number 2021-22. There was a site visit held this afternoon at 4:30. Julie, could you remain appointed as a member and sit in for Brad?
Yes, I will.
To recuse himself? Thank you.
I'll just go on record as recusing myself from this one also, Mike.
Okay, and Brad Harriman has recused himself from this application as well. Okay, I've read the project into the record. Julie has been appointed, and I'd like to invite the applicant's agent to make the formal presentation.
Hello, good evening. I'm Matt Cofflin with Recon Trail Design. I'm going to this application on behalf of the Eastern Housing, Eastern Lakes Region Housing Coalition. This is a proposed new trail, about 1,800 feet long. It will be non-motorized, multi-use via five to six-foot wide gravel path, and it will be constructed on top of an existing sewer line mound. So this is all land that was previously disturbed when the housing development was put in. And it will require to pass through a designated wetland area and two small bridges over existing stream channel. We will be constructing this trail within the wetland buffer, but we will not be disturbing any existing wetlands. We'll stay confined to on top of the mound above the sewer line. So I don't perceive any new impacts to native wetlands, and I've stated that I will use the state's best management practices for working within the buffer area. So I think our primary impact would occur within the buffer to your wetlands, but again, on top of previously disturbed ground. I'm not sure what other information you'd like at this point, and happily answer any questions you may have.
Board members have questions?
Is there a way to protect privacy of the people at the Harriman Hill area? Because this does come up into the backyards, and is there a way to protect their privacy?
Yeah, a fence would, would do the work there. We're constrained to this corridor. There's really not many other feasible places to put the trail, so it does skirt the back perimeter of one of the yard areas, and a fence would provide that privacy. It does terminate into the corner of their parking lot.
A plan to maintain this in the future, as in various weeds, various plants may end up growing in on it?
Yep, I will provide a annual maintenance plan to the housing coalition, and I would make myself available to do that maintenance work. And it would require annual brush removal from the sides to maintain the corridor and potentially adding some additional gravel several years down the road for any areas that may have settled, acted.
And these bridges that you're creating, they're not going to disturb the wetland, are you, sir?
No, the bridges will be installed above the banks, so they'll span the entire stream channel, and I will not disrupt anything below the banks. And I would also point you to the state's statutory permit by notice that has been approved.
Are there questions from the board?
This being used as a transportation, possibly, for the folks that live in Harriman Hill in the future?
I actually, I think that'll be the primary use, is people traveling to and from the housing community. Because it terminates on the parking lot and on 109A with no other, you know, like scenic destinations, I don't think that people will go here to solely recreate, like ride a bike 1,800 feet just to turn around. So I think the primary use now will be for transportation and better connectivity for non-motorized uses.
Lighting being proposed?
No lighting is being proposed.
At this point?
At this point. It would require further excavation and probably burying power lines, which is something I don't do. Thank you.
Has any consideration been given to making this trail ADA accessible?
Yes, so the standards that we go by are accessibility standards that are set by the Forest Service for recreational-type trails, which draw from the ADA and ABA specifications. So yes, we will build to those standards, but it's not exactly the same as building your sidewalks out here.
When you say that the trail is going to be non-motorized, you're not including in non-motorized, motorized wheelchairs and other equipment that handicapped can use to get around, run on power, electrical power?
No, that would be acceptable. And again, ultimately, it's the determination of the landowner for what's permissible. But this would be open to people with disabilities that have some sort of motorized transportation device. When I say non-motorized, it would exclude things like ATVs and snowmobiles.
And the trail materials are gravel as opposed to stone dust?
It's going to be a mixture. It'll be a hard pack mixture.
It will be a hard pack.
It includes some stone dust.
Okay. One of the requirements of 175-10 and then 175-5, one of the principal requirements is to show that no other location on the site can be used in place of this site. This is the only one that's appropriate, given the further, more productive use of the land elsewhere. Can you speak to why the trail has been placed where it is currently?
Yeah, the two primary reasons are, it's already an open corridor and building on top of ground that's already been disturbed. So it's actually the higher ground in that area as well. So there's no alternate routes through there because you'd end up in proper wetland areas, which would not be advisable to build anything in there.
And one last question. In your testimony in the beginning, you used the words, this trail had been part of a project approval previously considered. Can you, can you speak to that?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Perhaps the planner can speak to that?
I was originally approached by Kathy Barnard asking if Harriman Hill was required to install a trail. And when one goes through the planning board record, the planning board did not require a trail. However, a portion of that land was then put into conservation easement, and the conservation easement came with a clause that there was to be a trail connecting the residential areas to 109A. That also adds into why the trail is located where it is. The trail has to provide continuity in the conservation land from the residential portion to 109A, and it's already disturbed.
Understood. Okay, thank you, Tavis. Any other questions?
Yep. So the, the area that you're trying to improve and create this path on, are you adding any stabilization fabric to the bottom before you put the gravel on the top?
Yeah, so the construction method is to excavate the first three to four inches of soil to get the organic soils off of there, and then we put down a geotextile fabric for the full width, and then we add on up to, or at least six inches of hard pack material that then gets compacted. So that prevents mixing of the soils. It prevents additional vegetation growing up through the tread material. And then, like I said, minimal excavation. We really just want to get the organic soils off that things like to grow in.
Do you have to carry that refuse out?
So I have a, a machine that I can move a lot of material with, and I would put it in that, and the plan is to bring it to the upland section and disperse it in a confined area.
So you're just going to find another low spot to improve that, whether, with your refuse that comes out of the area?
Yeah, somewhere on the edge of the trail, again, in the upland section away from the wet area.
So with, with the concept of a motorized vehicle, I get down to 109A, and now I'm out on that corner where people are coming up around that corner about 30 miles an hour. And then I'm trying to get over across the street to Bay Street. So where am I going? I'm going down the side of the road with their hand-driven thing and, or somebody on a bike right there while cars are, how are we going to make the connection from, from the trail over? Seems like it just dead-ends there. It's kind of scary.
I agree with you. I think that that is the primary thing that should be addressed. I know that the housing coalition has had conversations with the state on what they would approve, and there is no simple answer. I would also ask, what are people doing now?
They're not using it.
Right, so if someone wanted to walk or ride their motorized wheelchair from that housing community now, they're on the road the entire time and then have to go through the intersections there too. So I think this provides a better solution, and it, it does get you to a crossing point that is closer to Front Bay Park and a slight gravel path that's over there.
So is the town engaging and possibly a cross area to get across the street, a marking or anything there?
At that location, it would be a mid-block crossing and not something the state would likely entertain. So no, the town is not actively engaged. I, you know, reading into it, it would almost suggest that was why the planning board didn't make the trail a condition from the onset, because it doesn't go anywhere.
Well, that's what I'm concerned about. Again, I think you're, you're inviting people to use the area when you don't give them a clear and safe directive to continue on, or like you said, are people just going to ride back and forth? It doesn't seem practical. They want to venture off into town, so that's what...
Yeah, I think this is not really a transportation corridor, although it could be, should the state decide to do something to allow access onto Bay Street. It's more like a recreational trail for the people who are in Harriman Hill. Clearly, there is...
It's my understanding this isn't, isn't going to be open to the public, at least that's what they...
It's only for Harriman Hill residents.
Correct.
Yeah.
I would also add that if the state allowed a crosswalk at that area, given the sight lines and the speed which people drive the road, it would be misguided if you believed that people were going to stop for a crosswalk. And so therefore, the people who get to the end of that trail and want to go to town are going to be thinking, oh, I need to be careful crossing the street, rather than just saying, oh, everybody's going to stop for me. So I think that in some ways, it is better not to have a crosswalk in that spot, and I think that the people who use that trail will understand that.
Keep it up to their own common sense. Any other questions from the board members?
I'd just like to make a comment. There were four of us who went out to visit the site today, and it is completely disturbed. The mound where the sewer is buried and the sewer goes under these crossings. It is a very logical place to put it, and it shortens, if a kid is on a bike going into town, it definitely shortens the route of going all the way down the road down 109A. You know, they go across this path, and at least it's briefer. Still the same road crossing, the same problem on Bay Street, harder and finer.
Thank you, Vaughn. Do I hear a motion to accept the application as complete?
I moved.
Seconded by?
Seconded.
Susan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Any members of the public, big pardon, want to comment on this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the discussion to the board. What is your pleasure?
I would move that we accept, accept the application.
Okay, so here a motion to accept the application for a special use permit for tax map number 176-020-01A.
Seconded.
Case number 2021-22. All in favor?
Aye.
With conditions proposed by the planner?
The only real condition is that the applicant's responsible for paying the recording fees, which is number two.
Okay, thank you. The application is accepted and approved unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mike. The next application, Brewster Academy Rogers Center, 72 Academy Drive. This is tax map and lot 218-150-D, case 2021-23. This is a site plan review. This is phase three addition to the Rogers Center.
Madam Chair, I have one more hearing to recuse myself from this evening, so I will retreat to my seat in the back of the room again.
Okay. Thank you. And Julie, would you be willing to sit in on this?
Yes, I will.
...station? Okay, thank you.
Oh, great, thanks. Yes, please. Good evening, everyone. My name is Andy Smith. I'm a senior project manager at Duing Schmidt-Kurz, DSK, from Concord, Massachusetts, and it is our pleasure this evening to present to you the Rogers Center Phase Three addition. Previously, we had sought approval and received approval for the Phase One renovations that are occurring right now, that you may be familiar with and have seen under construction. Phase Two, just to familiarize yourself, was submitted to the town as entirely an interior renovation to the building. So that is the lower-level basement is being renovated as the Phase Two. So we're presenting tonight Phase Three, which is an addition to the lakeside of the building, and we have additional materials that we brought today to kind of help clarify and explain the project in a more graphical manner. So you'll see some colored renderings of the planting plan, exterior elevations, and the floor plan itself. The project consists of about 3,700 or so square feet, hello, of additional square footage on the back. It is a one-story addition, and as you know, you've probably seen the backside of the building towards the lake. We're, we've added new windows on the lakeside to increase the views from the interior of the building out to the beautiful lake panoramic views. What this addition will seek to achieve is to expand the program spaces for Brewster on the lower level. So we'll be expanding and adding a robotics maker lab and a ceramics studio, a kiln room and art storage, and several exterior bathrooms for the athletes on the fields to be able to use outside. So you'll see, there's, the first page of what I handed out to you is just a basic locust plan, just in case you're not familiar, or if the public's not familiar with the location of the project. It is central to the Brewster Academy campus. This, the floor plan that you'll see shows the Level Zero plan, so the lower level is being renovated, or is, as I said, is under review to be renovated, and this will expand out onto the back of the building. So again, you can see the robotics lab with exterior stairs, ceramics, art storage, kilns, and the toilets. On the next page is the planting plan. So the top of the building has a terrace, so essentially that is in line with the, what used to be the gymnasium floor level of, of that building. So what will now be this kind of a student commons for the school will be able to spill out onto that terrace with amazing views to the soccer field and to the lake beyond. We've included some planting areas in there to help kind of break up the massing of that, also to provide some additional stormwater retention. Those planting beds, the goal of those is not just to provide, you know, the little four-inch seedum trays that you see on some green roofs, but to really build up the soil depth of those planting beds, plant them with native plants, and contribute to the ecology of the region and the surrounding area and the lake. So it'll be filled with grasses and plants that will help to foster butterflies and all sorts of insects and other great things that will be teaching opportunities for the students, and will help provide some nice views from the inside to a natural area, so you're not just looking at a big fence of pavers. There is some additional sidewalks that are included that you can see in that plan. Two stairs on, there's one on the north side, one on the south side for egress off the building. And, and I should note that this addition was part of an initial TRC review with the town, so we've kind of gone over all of the, any sort of concerns with them at a, at a previous date before we submitted for the Phase One approval. And I think, let's see, that, let me go over the exterior materials. So the next page with the, with the rendering one here. So trying to keep it, you know, cohesive with the existing materials of the building, so it'll have a, a fiber-reinforced concrete rain screen plating to it, so nice and durable, and to break up the massing of that. We're going to provide some brise lay, which is a kind of a wood look canopy that's over the windows to help shield the natural light, so it's not, so we're not kind of taking on all that solar heat gain into the space. So trying to provide some passive solar protection on the lower level in addition to the ones that are being installed at the bigger windows. And showing a railing going around the top. Right now, it's shown as glass to help kind of shield some of the winds that come off the lake. And you can see the planting beds, kind of an example of those elevated beds there. And I, I don't have a color rendering of the other sides, but you can see the next page has the black and white version showing those kind of stairs on either side. So students will be able to kind of go up onto the terrace, enter into the building, get some food at the cafe, and program space that Brewster definitely is looking for and is excited to have for both events and for day-to-day use. And the last page is just a simple section cut through the addition, just to kind of give you a, a sense of, it's not a huge building. It's, it's a relatively modest addition, you know, one story. But again, having that connection to the Level One and down to the basement, that Level Zero as well, so you can kind of see the relationship between what's there now in this addition on the back. in this addition on the back. And I think that's my part. Anything? Good, okay, all right, sounds good. All right, I think that's it. I think you also have the application with all the additional materials for the civil plans, photometric lighting, and then things like that. I don't have paper copies of those for everyone necessarily, but if there are any questions, we can certainly answer that.
Okay, let's see. You were required during the Phase Two to have a signed certificate of the stormwater operation and maintenance plan submitted?
Correct.
Was that done?
It was, the stormwater calculations and that whole report was submitted for this, but it was also submitted as part of the original Phase One. And the calculations covered the full fit out of the building, including this addition.
Okay, so it was submitted with this application?
Correct, it was.
Okay, I don't believe so.
Is that part of it?
Would you come to the microphone? You'd get him?
Great.
My name's Joanne Coppins. I'm a senior civil engineer with RFAS Engineering. And at the end of the stormwater analysis, front of you, maintenance plan for the management system. Can you hear me?
No, I'm not very well.
Oh, sorry. I always think when people come to the microphone and take their mask down, it makes no sense, but it is much easier to speak. At the end of the stormwater analysis report, there is an operation and maintenance plan for the stormwater management system.
Whole packet is signed by the engineer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
My stamp's on the front and my signature.
Okay, could you explain to us during the last hearing, we were told that you would need to justify the stormwater maintenance plan and the stormwater management of Phase Two. So do you have some justification for that?
Okay, I'm not really following the question, but Phase Two was entirely interior renovation. Phase One was the application that we came here before for?
Whichever phase it was, when we approved the stormwater management plan.
Yes, so do you have a specific question because?
I just want to know how it's working.
Oh, I don't think it's completely operational yet, but, okay, that is correct. It's still under construction.
Okay, well, when will it be complete?
Estimated date of completion is at the end of this month.
This month?
Correct.
Okay, all right, questions?
I have a question regarding the new mechanical area. I see it on the plan. I don't see it on the elevation, so I'm just wondering about screening the height of things.
Oh, thanks. Okay, great. So the mechanical area was approved as part of Phase One. There is a, there will be screening in regards to a, I believe it's a painted galvanized metal guardrail, because it's sunken down a little bit. So there will be some screening of the mechanical in that areaway. As part of Phase Three, we will just be expanding it just a few feet on the western side of that areaway. So that's the only part that's part of this application.
It says that it's Phase Three on the landscape plan. And I'm talking about the piece on the south that looks like maybe condensers and a generator.
Correct, and that was part of what was approved for Phase One. So get to that landscape plan here. Yeah, so it does read as new. I think the only portion that is, that is new for this phase is just the far-left condenser and that little bit of wall that's on the left side, that western wall of the areaway is the only part that's part of this phase. The rest is built right now.
So on the elevations, it really doesn't show with the screening. You know, we're looking at the side of the building as if it's not there.
Right, yeah, I'm, yeah, sorry, the elevations do not include it. Yeah, I think the way that it's being cut is it's cutting through the areaway in this lower elevation here. Yeah, it's cutting through that sunken area, so yeah, you're not seeing the screening there.
It makes it hard to judge whether or not it's screened.
Yes, and it is, and that was submitted as, again, as part of Phase One, so that is part of that application, yeah.
I have two questions. One, is this construction in any way going to impede anybody's, who's a neighbor's view? Like it is on the other side of the building from them, so it shouldn't be an issue?
Yeah, I don't believe so. I think any of the views that it might impede would be on Brewster Academy land, so, and I don't foresee it, given its height is pretty low, I don't foresee it really blocking views. And if anything, I think it would just enhance the access for students and faculty to be able to see the full panorama of the lake, which there aren't a whole lot of opportunities for on campus, so.
And given that Phase One was dealing with the water issues, this does not increase any of those runoff?
It's all, I would say it's all been engineered to account for all runoff and stormwater for this addition. That was part of that initial packet, that thick packet that Joanne brought up. And again, we, you know, took the board's advice in terms of additional green space, so we have added some additional stormwater retention. So based on what has been submitted, it should actually be an improvement on the calculations.
Other questions?
Yep, I got a couple. So the young lady, could she come up for a minute? So the last time you were here, you talked about a foundation drain that you didn't know where it went. Did you find it?
So the foundation drains are now tied into the storm drain. And so we figured all that out.
Where does that, where does that come out?
In the road, on the downhill side of that new swale.
Is it part of the stormwater management plan?
Well, yes.
I think the short answer to that is yes.
Yes, yes, the answer is yes.
But does it just come out and run down the hill and go in the lake?
No, because if you look at the open swale, it has a series of rock check dams throughout, and then there's a series of catch basins along with that. There's infiltration and sediment check dams along the way. And those are all part of the maintenance plan.
So last time we talked, we talked about the east side where your generator was going to go right next to the road there, and you had to move it away from the building to get 10 feet from the building. And we talked to you about some screening over there. Didn't see any on the plan here with any notations on that one.
Right, and I think last time we had discussed that it was based on maintenance requirements, we were not, were not able to kind of screen that with, you know, a fence or vegetation. The generator needs to be kind of out in the open. And there's also, along that road, we have a series of items. We have got the transformer, the generator, so it's kind of a part of a series of mechanical equipment that's already over there. And I think because it's also limited in the way that, like you said, that it's 10 feet away from the building, we're getting close to the road, didn't want to necessarily kind of screen it in with an even bigger fence enclosure, because I think that's actually going to draw more attention to it and be more of a visual buffer. So I think right now it's, you know, the generator kind of is what it is, and sits in the, on the site pretty well, and, but there's no plans to actually enclose that, because I think, again, it would make it into an even bigger mass along the road.
All right. So landscaping plan, you've got a rendition of a side hill of the front of the building, and it shows one tree on the left-hand side where these birch trees are supposed to go. And then your plan, it says heritage or paper birch, depending on the availability. I would, I would submit, I would stay away from the heritage birch. They exfoliate their bark after about 20 years, and they're kind of a, not a very showy item. And when I looked at that planting plan, the other thing that caught my attention was the witch hazel. That was kind of a, threw me for a loop there, because they're not really a, they're kind of a wild item, and once they get going, they're kind of crazy. Excuse me. So that was on the, on the westerly side. You've got the three birches in a clump in the middle, and then you've got three witch hazels. And underneath the birches, you've got individual witch hazels just flopped in there. And then on the left-hand side, you've got three more witch hazels. And the plan doesn't, I'm trying to understand what you're trying to accomplish over there on the, on the high side. I mean, if I was to look at anything there, I was, I would, I mean, I would put some spirea japonica, magic carpet, three of those, and down on the bottom side, I would put some boxwoods in there, and maybe take the center birch out and put a dogwood in there. And you get up next to that wall there where the stairs go down, you've got the, you've got the same thing. You've got HV, you've got a couple of them on the high side. It just doesn't make any sense. And this picture here is the rendering of one item down in the bottom, and you've got two white rhododendrons down there. You, I mean, this picture doesn't, doesn't render what your landscaping plan is.
Right.
One item that's a soldier down there.
Right, there, yeah, there may be a little disconnect between the architectural rendering and the landscape illustrative plan, and that may be my fault for not getting the exact trees on that.
If I was to, if I was to, you know, try to get some beam and a little balance going there, I'd stick a nice blue spruce down in the bottom area, and then another one up on top where those witch hazels are supposed to go, and frame that up really nice there on that wall, and make that look pretty in there. I know the birches are gonna, you know, get high. That's why I say you split the, split the difference there a little bit, and get some light in there, and your plants will grow a little better. That's what's going to happen.
Okay, yeah, no, we can certainly, you know, we can take a look at those suggestions and make adjustments.
Could you please speak into the microphone, please?
Do you think you could put that in an email to our attention, and so we could pass it on to the landscape architect?
Sure.
And I think that maybe for purposes of tonight, that if it's understood that, you know, similar-sized plantings could be substituted for what's shown on here, and then with your email, we can, the landscape architects can take it into consideration.
Okay, it'll be, well.
We'll do that.
Yes, it'll be a condition.
The other, the other part was the fire pits, or the gas fire pits on the top of the platform area. I read in your, on the proposed project, a gas-fired fire pit, large event spaces. You've got three of them up there.
Right now, we just have one fire pit.
One fire pit?
Yeah, so it's shown in that little notched planting area, kind of the south side of the terrace. So just that, just that one.
Okay. I thought, I saw the three circles, so it was.
I think those are meant to be, those are kind of loose furniture, so they're kind of, they're low, round pieces of furniture that could be seats, or it could be a place you could stand on or use it as a desk kind of thing, so loose furniture. I think the idea is that center area can be kind of, the furniture can be moved away for events.
That would be nice.
Okay, other questions? Okay, Tavis, do you have anything to add?
No, I believe the application is complete. I suppose one question I have is, was the landscaping plan done by a landscape architect?
Yes, it is.
Because it doesn't have a, it doesn't have a stamp on it. So I would caution the board as to, unless there are specific plants that aren't native that are proposed, or there's some reason on the plantings, I think the board could come up with suggestions, not conditions necessarily, on changing the landscaping plan, just trying to help the board.
I was just under the impression that once the plan was submitted, these were the items that went with the plan.
Well, they are. What I'm saying is I don't know if the board has enough traction to make revised plantings a condition of approval, but I think the board can make suggestions that might help the project.
I don't have a problem with Brewster not taking my suggestions. They have the plan, and if they want to look a little nicer, maybe they will.
Oh, no, I, the word "condition" came up after that discussion. I was just putting that out there. I do have five recommended conditions, one simply referring to the plan set, which should be.
Okay, well, we can wait for that, then, yeah, okay. All right, okay, so the application is complete, and I'll entertain a motion to accept this application.
I'm moved.
Thank you. Motion has been made.
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay, that means I can now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak to this application? Okay. All right. Any other questions, board members? Okay, Tavis, if you've got some conditions for us to consider, that would be great.
Five recommended conditions. One refers to the plan set, which is written, and the review was premised on what was in the packet. I would add to that the seven sheets that were received this evening. Number two, applicants responsible for providing a construction guarantee is outlined in the site plan review regulations. If the board approves it, it's this. The next step will be to work with Brewster on establishing that fee and schedule submission. Applicant responsible for payment of all recording fees, that would include the NOD, et cetera. In lieu of a MYLR, I would recommend that an ASBIL be submitted once everything is complete, and that be added to the file at the applicant's expense. Number four goes into more detail, working with staff to complete the construction observation agreement and related surety. And number five is the ubiquitous, the more restrictive language in the final wording is trolling.
And can we add a condition about, that John has suggested some changes? Could that go in as a condition of the approval?
You can add a condition. Not sure what the wording would be.
For them to consider suggestions?
So number six, applicant to work with Member Thurston's suggestion on planting?
Yes. About this, number six, proposed planting shown on plan L31 to be revised per pending input from planning board member John Thurston.
You're saying shall be revised?
Well, they've already agreed that they will listen to Mr. Thurston's suggestions.
I think they agreed to review it.
We will, we will review it, yes, with our landscape architect.
And planting shown on plan L3.1 to be reviewed for pending input from planning board member John Thurston. Next condition.
So on the planner's comments down on design review, do we, we address that question from the planner? What needs to evaluate in elevations and could we consider Section 173-19B architectural standards?
That is something the board wanted in the site plan review, so.
Okay.
I think as a matter of process, we probably should get that in advance, just for some sort of review and comment.
The first time this was put in the staff review, I provided all the guidelines, and the board looked at me cross-eyed, saying, what do we do with this? So this time, I just referred to the guidelines.
I'm not complaining about your process. I'm just talking about the future, to straighten things out.
I'm not sure what the board intends to look at. I'm personally at a quandary with requiring architets to add a site plan review phase, but that's, ship has sailed.
Yeah, so my only concern with that was the screening issue, which apparently has been taken care of in Phase One, even though it says Phase Three on the added.
Correct, yeah. It's just, right.
Remember, the Phase One plans included this Phase Three element, so there was discussions at that point about the landscaping and the screening of those elements. And then... And then each can point fingers at one another. I'm not sure if the planning board asked Brewster to come back for Phase 3, or Brewster offered to come back for Phase 3, or yes, both happened. So it has been reviewed. They submitted landscaping based on Phase 1, and what they've learned in the course of Phase 1, and showed that in Phase 3 to address those concerns. But I don't know if the board is yet satisfied. In between, the architectural standards came in by plan review.
Okay, well, the board did not ask them to come back to, for Phase 3. That was their decision.
As far as architectural design standards, the only question that we had before us in that regard was the screening on the generator and the other equipment, and apparently that has been to Vaughn's satisfaction, is that correct? And then as far as I'm concerned, 17319B been answered?
Any other issues?
I'd like a motion.
Yes, I'd like a motion to approve this with the conditions.
Happy to move to approve case number 2021-23, tax map 218-150-CabD, Phase 3 of site plan review for Brewster Academy, with the six conditions as enumerated by the planner.
Thank you, okay. Someone want to second the motion?
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, all right, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing for proposed zoning changes. The first one is an amendment to the sign ordinance 175-44. The article would read as follows, "Are you in favor of the adoption of Amendment Number 1, as proposed by the Planning Board for the Wolfboro Planning and Zoning Ordinance, to amend Chapter 175 of the zoning regulations, specifically Article 6, general provisions, by amending 175-44 Signs M to delete M1, accessory signs, and to renumber the remainder of the section accordingly to clarify the language for permitting and project review." So basically, this is just an amendment to remove accessory sign. You want to just comment on that?
Very briefly, the board is aware, all of the sign types in the sign ordinance are very specific. There's wall signs, window signs, things of that nature. The only place the term accessory sign comes up in is the definition, so it makes it a bit confusing. This led to the discussion, by the definition of sign, essentially anything that was visible on a property suggesting what someone may buy or view on the property becomes an accessory sign. How many are you allowed, what square footage, et cetera? But the recommendation was to remove this, as it provides more confusion than clarity.
Okay, thank you. Okay, planning board members, any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, I'll open the public hearing on, on this amendment, to remove the accessory sign and its definition from the ordinance. Okay, all right, then I'll close the public hearing, and I'd like a, a motion to move this to the 2022 town warrant.
Promote.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded, and to move this to the town warrant. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Same.
And abstentions? Sorry, Brad. Okay, so one abstention. Okay, the next article is definitions for restaurants. And the article will read, "Are you in favor of the adoption of Amendment Number 2, as proposed by the Planning Board for the Wolfboro Planning and Zoning Ordinance, to amend Chapter 175 of the zoning regulations, specifically XXB11 definitions and, and word uses, by amending 175-175 terms, define, amend the definition of restaurant, and further to add the definition of restaurant and drive-through, to clarify the language for permitting and project review." Okay, so, so basically, this one, we're simply adding to the definition of restaurant, restaurant drive-throughs are prohibited. And then a new definition, restaurant drive-throughs, it would be a restaurant which by design of physical facilities through or to which one can drive, especially to be served without leaving one's vehicle. Okay, and any, any further comments, Tavis?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay, all right. Board members? Okay, so I'll open the public hearing, okay. Mr. Murray?
My name's Roger Murray, and I think the restaurant drive-through definition needs some help. The way it's currently worded, it could be construed as characterizing all restaurants' drive-through, because it says in part, "A restaurant which by design of physical facilities to which one can drive." You can drive to virtually any restaurant in the town of Wolfboro.
Maybe we should remove the comma.
Leaving, leaving one's vehicle.
Well, I mean, especially is, that doesn't mean that's what it is. I mean, it says, maybe you're doing it, you're going there to not leave your vehicle, but it doesn't require that you not leave your vehicle. And I, I think just the wording of things is not terribly good. I'll offer a suggestion, if you'd like.
Okay, all right.
A drive-through restaurant is a restaurant where the general public can purchase food and beverages without leaving the vehicle.
That does not include the model of the A&W stores, where you end up going and parking your car, and therefore having it served to you.
A car hop, if you will.
Well, I thought about car hops, and particularly remembering American Graffiti, where they came out on roller skates, but I don't think that's really necessarily something we want in Wolfboro, or that we have room for.
Okay, so you've given us some wording, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and.
I think we could solve that issue that he just rose by taking away the comma and the word "especially." And it would say the same thing without a comma.
So through or to which one can drive to be served without leaving?
Yeah, with no comma, no especially.
If we make that change, where do, where does this leave this proposed warrant? Do we have time to get it back on the warrant?
Don't even think it needs a new hearing. You're basically making a grammatical change.
And I would agree with Vaughn, get rid of the comma, and get rid of especially.
Okay, so.
I move that we change the language to read a restaurant, restaurant drive-through, "A restaurant which by design of physical facilities, comma, through or to which one can drive to be served without leaving one's vehicle," period.
I think that's pretty straightforward and self-explanatory.
Okay, and so, so this can be amended at this particular, okay, because it's not a substantial change.
You're just, you're just clarifying the language of the definition that was advertised, so that's fine.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay, and any other comments? Okay, then.
Move to warrant.
Yep, thank you. Move to the 2022 town warrant.
As amended.
As amended. And motion has been made. Somebody want to second that?
Seconded.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, the next one is an amendment to the sexually oriented businesses. Are you in favor of the adoption of Amendment Number 3, as proposed by the Planning Board for the Wolfboro Planning and Zoning Ordinance, to amend Chapter 175 of the zoning regulations, specifically general provisions, by deleting 17553 sexually oriented business in its entirety, and replacing it with an amended 175-53 sexually oriented businesses, to clarify the language for permitting and project review? Do you want to go through this one, Tavis?
Very, very briefly. What I was tasked with doing was finding, or updating the existing 17553 to be more current, if you will, with other models that are used throughout the state. So what you have in front of you is a revised 17553.1, has some definitions. Keep in mind, correlation with this is also some, moving some terms from 17553 into 175175 definitions. That goes through a purpose and intent statement, locational requirements, separation between uses, similar and dissimilar uses, spells out the requirements for the application process, and also stipulates that an applicant needs to go through operating requirements for a sexually oriented business. This is as presented to the board at your workshop, and nothing has changed since that time.
Right, I'll just, just point out that when 17553 was originally crafted, it was a difficult issue at the time, and the article as written was incomplete, and did not cover, did not provide the town with the necessary protections that the revised 17553 does.
Okay, I just had, had one, one question. On location requirements, let's see, it says minimum setbacks from certain uses. A sexually oriented business shall not be located within 500 feet of any property line of any of the following. And so then, then it goes through the list. But in the other, the previous ordinance, there was setbacks from dwelling units, not be located within 200 feet of an existing dwelling. Should that be included? I, I mean, there's, it then, it goes on to say, minimum setbacks from certain zone, zoning districts. Sexually oriented business shall not be located within 500 feet of any residential district. So I didn't know whether, if there was a dwelling, that we needed that setback also. Question.
This particular case, the only zone that, subsequent to another amendment to be discussed later, but the only district where this could be applied for is in the Pine Hill district.
Right.
There are few, if any, single-family homes I can think of in the Pine Hill Road Development District.
But adding that would not really change the actuality of the regulation. So if there was a setback of 200 feet from dwelling units, that would not change anything, but may end up, that's it.
Yeah, this is catching me cold, because this is the first time in three reviews this has come up, so if you want to add something, that would be a new public hearing.
Right.
I'm just a little confused, you're talking about 250 feet from a dwelling unit, but we just read that it's going to be 500 feet from any.
Yeah, that's.
Lot line, so they're already 500 feet away.
Residential district.
District. If there's a dwelling in the.
Yes, but she's just talking about 250 feet.
From a house.
From an existing dwelling.
So if there's a house in a district that's not just residential, Kathy would like to add.
If there's a house in the Pine Hill Road Development District, the SOB would have to be 250 feet away from it, well as everything else.
But it's already 500 feet from the lot line.
The district.
The zoning district.
Doesn't say separation from the lot line. Frankly, I think the board is looking at probably 50 square feet of the Pine Hill Road Development District that meets all of these requirements.
Yeah, that's, that's the other thing, the way this was crafted, and the way it's been located in Pine Hill Road Development District, sort of excludes, well, I shouldn't say that. It makes it difficult for a sexually oriented business to locate itself in that district because of the requirements of the, of the regulation. In addition, I think it could be, one could argue that restrictions in 1755331 are in the public interest. Protection to private schools, childcare facilities, churches and synagogues. It would be hard to make the same argument when you're discussing, or when you're considering a private home, where adults are resident, and, and expect the ordinary vicissitudes of life to have to deal with, and then without expectations of particular protections, that children, schools, recreational facilities, churches, and places of worship would accept, would, would assume. I, I would not be in favor of changing the language to include restriction to 250 feet from a residential location.
200 feet.
200 feet from a residence at this stage.
Well, that, that would be a residence in a, in the dwelling, in the zone.
Agreed.
And I, I think they.
Right now, I think.
The same protection as people in zoning districts.
Well, they, they have the same protection of people in zoning districts. We, we accord special protections to special classes of people in zoning districts, like schools, and we have increased setbacks.
Okay, but not the dwelling units.
And establish drug-free zones. We don't have the same.
This is something that I picked up from the previous ordinance, and just thought that it was worth bringing to the board's attention. In the, in the case of a dwelling unit in a particular zoning district we're talking about putting this in. So that's why I brought it to your attention.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, entertain a motion to move this particular item, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing on this one. Go ahead.
I just think there needs to be one point of clarification on what was just addressed under number two there, where it says 500 feet of any of residential district. I interpreted the first time as meaning any residential district, which would be a small R and a small D, or, but then I looked at it, and under the zoning ordinance, and most of the Pine Hill District is surrounded by the R, residential zoning district. And I just think you need to clarify on which this is. I think there's a small part of the Pine Hill District that abuts the village residential zone. And I think based on the conversation, it would seem we're all talking about 500 feet of any residential district, not a particular zoning district. of any residential district, not a particular zoning district.
Little r, little d.
What was that?
Little r, little d.
And take out.
Was the intent.
And take out the of.
Take out the who?
The of. So it reads any residential district.
Any, yes, correct.
Yes, thank you. Take out the of. For case or.
Okay.
Those are the.
Well, that still doesn't solve the problem of a dwelling in the Pine Hill District, I don't think. But anyway, that's just me. Okay, any other people want, any other members of the public? Okay, I'll close the hearing and, whether he wants to make a motion or continue with this.
Happy to move the amended text.
Second motion?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? I am opposed. I think that we really should be protecting things. Seem like a good addition.
Well, if it.
Okay, thank you. On to the next one. Amendment to lighting and illumination. Are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number four as proposed by the planning board for the Wolfboro Planning and Zoning Ordinance to amend Chapter 175 of the zoning regulations, specifically general provisions, by amending 175-53-1, lighting and illumination, to clarify the language for permitting and project review? Go ahead, Tavas.
As the board is aware, the lighting subcommittee met, made some recommendations on changing the lighting regulations in town, primarily those that applied to site plan review. The board then made the decision to move the residential components of that back into 175-53-1. And so doing, as you see, the first part, the definitions have been moved into 175-175. It moves down to paragraph B, which is essentially what has been in the lighting regulations all along with regard to single-family homes, or I should say, non-site plan review projects. Clarified some of the language on lumens, hours of operation, downlighting, uplighting aspects. And this is where the board left off. Nothing to add.
Okay, and the permit requirements, it says building permit should be required prior to the installation of any new fixtures. Is that residential as well as site plan?
Yes. Anytime someone adds a fixture, you need an electrical permit.
Okay.
So that's the building permit. That's the trigger for someone to come in and review, and the town has the opportunity to look at downlighting and things of that sort.
Okay, all right. Okay, the new installation of uplighting by any method is prohibited. Like, up above in the first paragraph, it said uplighting is any method and is prohibited. So, I mean, is that kind of a duplication, or is this more of an explanation?
I think the second paragraph needs to come out.
It just seemed like it was saying.
I think it was omitted previously, and it didn't, and it didn't hold when it was deleted.
Okay, so.
So, number one, general lighting requirements, all lighting in the town of Wolfboro is required to have full cutoff shielding, uplighting by any method is prohibited. However, the planning board may allow limited use of upward landscape lighting on a case-by-case basis, period, skip down to existing lighting. The middle paragraph needs to go away. You're correct.
Being as how that's a redundancy.
Correct.
Orial change.
Okay, and the control of glare. I mean, is this going to require an engineer, or how does this?
No, anytime you go to buy a light, it tells you what the lumens are.
Yeah, right. I, yeah. But this is a new section, right? No, it's not, not a new section. Okay. Yeah, okay, all right. And so the three plus D three. Okay, all right, good. Okay, and then there's a section three on residential lighting. And it's, doesn't, I mean, it almost seems to contradict the fact that you need a permit to upgrade your lighting.
You need a permit to install lighting. What this does is speak to people that, say you have five accent lights around the outside of your home that was approved, and at the time of approval, it met the lighting regulation. You then decide you're going to go out and replace all of those 45 watt bulbs with LEDs. You're supposed to, this is the general lighting ethics, if you will. You're supposed to maintain that throughout.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so it really isn't redundant.
Yeah.
You need the permit anyway to start out with, and then these are just to cover existing. Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, I'll open the public hearing on this.
Amen before the meeting. Under three, one, it reads residential lighting uses shall not be used or maintained in such a fashion as to inhibit or interfere with the use and enjoyment of neighboring properties after the hours of 11:00 p.m. Under the current ordinance, that ends after properties, and it doesn't allow you to interfere with your neighbor's use and enjoyment up until 11:00 p.m. And I'm wondering why that's being added.
It was added by the lighting, the subcommittee, because there are some that would have lighting that wasn't necessarily bothering their neighbors at nine o'clock, but if outside floodlight was on 24/7, that would be interfering or injurious. I thought you were going to go after the qualitative terms, but.
No, no, the, well, I don't think you should be able to inhibit your neighbor's use and enjoyment up until 11:00. And then, once you stop at 11:00, when can you restart? Because there's no closing time, it just stops at 11:00 p.m.
I didn't read, I didn't read that as an invitation to inhibit or interfere with a neighbor's.
I mean, to.
Well, if you don't put an end, an end on the period you can't inhibit, then when can you start?
The point is, I don't think you're, the assumption is that you don't start at all, but you certainly have to stop doing anything bad after.
Okay.
Turn the lights down, in other words.
The point, the point he's making is if I turn it off at 10:59, can I turn them back on at 11:01? The question would be, should it be, you can, if you support the idea of being interfering or inhibiting your neighbor's enjoyment of the property, should, till 11:00 p.m., should it be, say, between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m.? And no, it doesn't account for daylight savings time.
It does, because it's the local time.
I mean.
Are we being a little too precise here?
What is the timing for the noise ordinance?
11.
11.
11 to 7.
Normally, when you have one of these things, there's a starting date and ending.
I think the noise ordinance is 6:30 to 11, or 7 to 11.
Is there a time phase in the noise ordinance? Between certain hours X and Y?
Yes.
Or is?
I believe it's 7 to 11.
11 to 7. 11 to 7.
11 to 7 quiet, 7 to 11 loud.
Okay.
So that would be 7 to 11 light, 11 to 7 dark. However, have to be, I agree with the context, putting an end time to the non-injurious period. What we haven't addressed is what inhibiting or interfering with the enjoyment is, because when the committee looked into that, you actually had to show physical harm to the observer of the light. Though it's not, oh geeper, that light's annoying, it's damaging to oneself.
And we also assume that the meaning is understood that after, after 11:00, you turn your lights down. You don't really have to tell them after 6:00 a.m. to turn your lights down, because usually, except in the wintertime, say 7:00 a.m., the sun's up, and lights are going to be overshadowed by the, overshadowed, overtaken by the sun.
Well, if, as Tavas says, you have to, it has to result in some harm, that seems, why do you want to permit that? If it's not causing any particular harm, then you can put some light on your neighbor's property. But if you're harming them, which is what the committee found out, why are you going to allow that?
Say that again, I couldn't understand you.
Well, what Tavas said was that when you looked at inhibiting or interfering the use and enjoyment, there has to be some physical harm.
Yes, you would have to be.
So why are you permitting someone to cause physical harm to their neighbor?
Because, because it's hard to differentiate the, from, from the calculation method that was being used was not, you couldn't use the calculation method by going to somebody's property line and measuring the Kelvins coming across the property line. This, this was basically a clearer way to understand the ordinance. And basically, it's not a, it's not a, it's not an extinction of it. It's basically, you know, under two, you're allowed the provision of it's either 100% fully shielded, or it's on motion. So the elimination is not there. It's basically, it's curbing it down to something that is dark sky compliant, which is really the golden rule that we're trying to achieve here.
So, and I think you need to look at one and two in unison.
Yes.
Because it's quite possible that there might be a arguably blinding light that comes on if an intruder comes into somebody's yard, but it's motion activated and/or on a timer. What purportedly is happening in some neighborhoods is there are floodlights that are on, very bright, all night long. So.
But what you're saying is it's largely unenforceable because you can't prove harm.
That's right.
It's basically a nuisance suit, yes. It gives somebody something to hang on to and say, but your honor, the light was on at one. Which is back to Roger's original point, how soon after 11:00 p.m. can you turn the light back?
So this is the best we can.
Isn't that, isn't that the same issue you have with noise?
Yeah, it's essentially the same issue as noise. And noise ordinance, noise is described as being unpleasant or disturbing. How do you qualify what.
Yes.
Bring your unpleasant noises, it's really in the eye of the beholder. I think if this, if I were to put myself in the position of a judge, I would read number, paragraph one, I would say, what does the ordinary guy understand by what that's saying? Simply is, if you have lights on after 11:00, and they're dragged to the guy next door, you're supposed to turn them off. The meaning is clear.
Agreed.
But if you can't determine whether it's having any impact, why put this thing in there anyway?
Well, that's the same thing with the noise ordinance. How do you just, how do you establish an unpleasant noise? I like rock music really loud, it's not unpleasant here.
Well, the noise ordinance has other uniquities to it. It can be heard beyond the property line, which goes back to John's point. Is it .2 lumens at the property line? Well, you can be, I think as some members can attest, you can be at or below .2 lumens at a property line, but the simple fact that it's .2 at the property line, but on all night long, there comes the problem.
I think we're splitting so many hairs that the issue is now balled.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely, and really, the bigger picture here, Roger, is dark sky. Across our country and our world, our skies are brightening up. What we're trying to do is we're trying to get control of that skylight and to get our insects, our bodies and everything back to acclimate using one universal method that is easy to take care of.
Well, I think that's very commendable, but if you're doing that, why are you saying that, well, you can interfere with your neighbors with bright lights until 11:00 p.m.?
That's a.
And in fact, you can't determine whether somebody's complying with this, why do you put it in there? Because it sort of suggests, well, we can turn all the lights until 11:00.
I don't think it's inviting people to annoy their neighbors until 11:00 p.m. Give the neighbor something to say, it's like, it's after 11, and it's still on, I'm going to say something.
Yeah, if, the assumption is that before 11:00, no matter how much of a drag it is, not inhibiting or interfering. After 11:00, then it becomes something different.
And I'm going to suggest that the idea that the noise is off the property, I would suggest that in housing areas where houses are reasonably close together, a, an air conditioner in the, in a window is going to be producing noise which goes across the boundary, it's not loud, and it shouldn't be annoying, but, you know, these are the things that you're dealing with, and.
Your loud and my loud and Vaughn's loud are different.
And the question is, you know, how many lumens do you need to worry about? Is, if it's like a nightlight, is that going to bother me? No, and it's the spotlight that does. So in many ways, it's common sense, it's being nice to your neighbor.
Okay, or, do we want to change this or not? Okay. That's right. Okay, then any other comments? Okay, yep, close.
Close the hearing?
Yep, close the hearing, and I'll entertain a motion to move this to the town warrant as, as presented to us.
As presented.
Okay.
Pardon, no, 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 as amended.
As amended, right.
Or, paragraph number one.
Right, okay. All right, so Mike has made a motion to move this to the town warrant, and John seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, the next one, amendment to the Pine Hill Road Development District. Are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number five as proposed by the planning board for the Wolfboro Planning and Zoning Ordinance to amend Chapter 175 of the zoning regulations, specifically Pine Hill Road Development District, by deleting 175-96 and 96 dot one in their entirety and replacing it with 175-96 permitted uses and special exceptions, 175-96 dash dot one, to clarify the language for permitting and project review? Tavas?
So the background on this, I was asked by the planning board to take all of the permitted uses and special exception uses out of the C2 district and move it into the Pine Hill District. Effectively, that is what's here with some minor rearrangement. In 175-96 E, there is a strike through three, which should be deleted. It has a strike through, it just, for some reason, showed up. The strike through three will not actually be on the warrant. For the board's recollection and memory, you'll note the changes, it's from the last meeting with N, new and used car dealers, O, been separated out for auto repair and body shops and small engine repair shops. Fuel storage has been added as QD. Notes, the footnotes have been updated. Major special exception uses remains. So again, this is the one I spoke to earlier, see under 175-96 I, where sexually oriented businesses comes in as previously discussed and moved to a warrant this evening.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
For the record, yes, there is something else. As there is no official adopted zoning map, I'm not quite sure there is a C2 district, so it is very timely to take the uses out of it. It shows up on the unofficial zoning map, but I don't believe the description for the one parcel everyone in the room believes to be C2 actually exists anymore. Very good to make this change, in my opinion.
Okay, and just one, and maybe this is me being over specific, but in contractor's yard light, that's less than 30,000 pounds of vehicle. That's the light and then for the, for the special exception, the contractor's yard, gross vehicle rating of more than 33,000 pounds. Should that be put in here? I mean, it's in the definition section.
And, correct.
Is that enough?
I believe that's most appropriate, yes.
That's all we need.
Yeah, okay, all right, just-
Madam Chair, I just want to, going record to recuse myself from this one, as I have in the past, on this Pine Hill Road area up there, so.
Okay, great. Okay, any other questions?
I, I can, I check that questions that we made on August 17 have been incorporated into this text.
Okay, and, and another thing that I noticed, under AM, conversion of structures existing as of March 10, 1992 to a boarding, lodging or bed and breakfast. We don't allow boarding, so can we just strike that?
Up to the board.
It's gotten past three, one, two, three, four planners. Multiple iterations of the planning board. That's good, thank you.
Is that okay to, for everybody to take that out since we don't allow them?
Prohibited use, it shouldn't have been in there in the first place.
Okay, all right. Okay, anything else? Okay, I'll open the public hearing on the Pine Hill Road Development District. Any member of the public that wants to-
So M remains but with abs, absent boarding, correct?
Yes, M remains absent of the board boarding.
Yep. Where storage appears in 175-96, there's a reference to note one. And it seems to me there should be a reference to note one, 96.1C of storage of volatile fuels, so that they're set back 150 feet along with other storage facilities. Note one, a storage facility shall be set back 150 feet from all state numbered highways and the existing vegetation shall be preserved in said setback.
Interesting dialogue, but this board drew a very clear line between storage and volatile fuel storage.
Yep, and, and I think that's the difference. The difference is in 175-96 I, we're looking at storage facilities as a use, whereas in contractor's yards, light and heavy, we're looking at fuel storage areas within that use. And we're setting back in I, the use, by 150 feet. We're not requiring that in contractor's yards, heavy and light, different uses have their own setback requirement.
You're not requiring that for-
I think it's a different question. I think it's, 175-96 I has the footnote for the 150. 176-91C does not require that same setback.
Which I think is unfortunate. This is one of the gateways to the town. Do we really want, having removed the oil storage facilities from behind the railroad station, do we now want to display them at 30 feet back from Route 109? I think where the, the Eastern propane, that seems like a perfect place for that and working very well. But if you've got somebody storing oil or whatever, do you really want these big tanks sitting 33 feet back from the property line? One of the gateways to the town. I'm not objecting to them being there, I just think they should be set back and concealed.
A future work I would recommend considering is what storage of volatile fuels is, that's an undefined term.
That's a different issue.
The, the board has taken it to mean gas stations. And what I would suggest is gas stations shouldn't necessarily be back 150 feet.
No, I would, I would agree. But you all, you permit gas stations, so if you permit gas stations, I think that means you can have gas there.
But this, this board drew a very clear distinction that storage of volatile fuels, volatile fuels in fact meant filling. As opposed to the-
But what about if you're storing diesel oil or heating oil? You're going to allow that 30 feet back?
Uniquely, diesel isn't a volatile fuel, but I digress. But Eastern propane was held to that setback requirement. Originally, Pine Hill was the, the town's industrial park specifically set up for storage of volatile fuels and other things that people didn't want downtown. I raised an objection with the planning board as to why a zone that was created specifically for such a use now required that use for which the zone was required to have a special exception. But again, here it is. So, storage of volatile fuels, garages and filling service stations. I think the next iteration of this needs separation for the distinction between a gas station and a fuel storage depot. I would accept the comment that a fuel storage depot such as Eastern propane and there are tens of thousands of gallons of propane probably should have a setback. But a gas station, it would be ineffectual to have a 150-foot setback.
Good point, Harris, good point. I point out 175-96.1A, light industry, is that a strikeout in number one?
Yes, it's a strikeout for the old one that was referring to the need for site review, which is redundant because it's all everything.
Okay.
And, and would you, Madam Chairwoman, maybe we should put onto our 2022 work program an examination of 175-96-1C, maybe parse out setbacks for volatile fuels, garages, filling and/or service stations?
My suggestion is the board revisit storage as a concept and then define-
And throw that into the mix.
No, dry, dry storage versus liquid versus fuels versus-
Well, we do have an opportunity to change this now.
You could, if you wanted to make that move now, suggestion would be to remove the phrase "storage of volatile fuels" from 175-96-1. Have C simply read "garages and filling or service stations."
And you are eliminating that use?
I would argue no, because storage of volatile fuels is not a defined use in the town of Wolfboro, other than as the board laid out in intent.
Well, we ran into that problem with Eastern propane and that caused a difficulty.
Could we solve this by simply putting a little number one footnote behind volatile fuels and nowhere else?
Yeah, right. Yeah, it seems like we'd pick out "storage of volatile fuels."
You, you could add, you could add the superscript of one after "storage of volatile fuels" to then trigger the setback, yes.
Yeah, but then the trouble is, what kind of storage of volatile fuels are we talking about? At a 25-gallon tank or a 5,000-gallon tank?
That's my entire point, it's not defined and this-
Then, I, I don't think at this point we should be messing with the language because we're opening up a big can of worms if we do. I think we should put that on a work program and really get our teeth into it, make sure that what we craft out at the end is something that covers all the bases, as opposed to trying to do it now with a time constraint.
Given there's been one application in the reasonably recognizable past of this entire town for a questionable storage of volatile fuels, I don't think it's going to hurt to go one more year.
Yeah, I, I think that I would be more comfortable if we had time to consider the ramifications. And Roger's point is a good point. We do need to be careful protecting the gateway into the town there. And I don't think we can do that tonight here, under these conditions. I, I would move this, when the public hearing is closed, I would move this to the warrant with the understanding that we're going to revisit some of the wording in that section in the future.
And keep storage of volatile fuels now.
We have to, otherwise we're going to run into another problem.
Right, yeah, okay. Okay?
Yes, this is like step one of three steps.
Right.
Continue.
Next year. Okay, anyone else want to comment? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and-
Move this article to the warrant with the amendments already noted, removing a superscript three in 175-96E, word boarding in M, and the superscript one in 175-96-1A.
A motion has been made. Somebody want to second it?
Seconded.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions? All right. Next definition, amendments to definitions.
Instead of reading it all, Madam Chair, if you'd like.
Yeah, right, yeah.
The question came up as far as noticing of the public hearing. It's my position that Article VII was duly noticed for procedural purposes because one refers to the modifications to the lighting section, the other one includes the rewrite of the sexually oriented business. What Article VII is doing is simply moving the terms that were in sexually oriented business in lighting back into 175, 175 definitions. The definitions have not changed, they have not been amended, amended or otherwise moved. They are just coming from a non-numbered section of earlier sections of the ordinance and this is where all definitions will reside moving forward.
Okay, and, I mean, this, I had talked to Tavis about this earlier because the legal notice, on definition, it says related to sexually oriented businesses. And so it seems your approach is that the definitions are here and they show up in the lighting.
It is because the earlier article with an amendment to lighting and illumination, 175-53.1, includes therein in paragraph A, the definitions moving to 175, 175.
Okay. Everyone all right with moving ahead with this?
Yeah, I think the public was warned that 175, 175 is going to be dealt with tonight in one form or another, and those who are interested would be here. And in addition, we're, we're on camera.
And so the other way to resolve it, if the board was concerned, would be to add a new article, nine, if you will, so that lighting had a move of words into 175, 175, and sexually oriented businesses had to separate and discreet moving of words.
Right, and-
To me, it's a bit cumbersome because people are going to wonder why one set of words is changing here and another set of words is changing over here.
If, if anybody reads this, I mean, here are the definitions all, in the lighting area, all crossed out and they're over in the definition.
Correct.
Is everybody okay?
We talked before about Vaughn suggested moving the definitions all to one-
Yes.
-area.
This is, this is step one of that.
Right, this is step one. That's, and that's what we talked about was that we are trying to get all the definitions into 175.
Yeah, I think that should be-
Yeah.
So I, again, I think the notice, the public was notified that the two sections were changing and the article as written in number seven includes all of those terms.
Okay, all right, I'll open the public hearing on, on this one. Definitions. Questions? Okay, very good. I'll close, close the public hearing and entertain a motion to move this one to the town warrant.
Oh, moved.
Motion has been made.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions? All right, very good. Okay, amendment to the Bay Street Limited Business District, the MAP amendment.
Oh.
Do you have the MAP things for us? Okay, while he's passing that out, this is Article eight. Are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number seven as proposed by the planning board for the Planning and Zoning Ordinance to amend 175 of the zoning regulations, district boundaries and descriptions, and Bay Street Limited Business District by amending to the district boundaries to clarify the language for permitting and project review as follows? And then it goes through all of, all of this. You, you can take over.
Thanks, I'm not going to read it either, but I am going to touch on a part of it. So one of the things that I would recommend the board put on its work plan for next year is adopting an official zoning map. By so doing, you avoid a, essentially a meets and bounds description of the zoning districts. I will tell you, it becomes rather confusing until you get comfortable once you start going thence northeasterly along the southeastern boundary of parcels and turnings, north by northeasterly to a point of this and then turning. One of the reasons I think the zoning map is perhaps an advisable direction is it became clear very specifically this afternoon, but in the process of doing this, that I don't think many of the zoning district boundary descriptions have remained current with board actions. It also is a bit confusing when you look at the zoning map in the planning conference room that is often hailed as the zoning map. It reflects changes to zoning that are not reflected in the district boundaries nor reflected on the online tax maps. However, the intent with this, and I gave you a quick mock-up of the area, the project that the Filterbed Road Subcommittee looked at was potentially rezoning the parcels along Filterbed Road. There was a discussion at that time of either extending the Pine Hill Road District or their uses down in that area or moving the Bay Street Limited Business District to incorporate those parcels. So with a collaborative effort between planning board members, Subcommittee members, several business owners along the corridor, the decision was made to extend the Bay Street Limited Business District to include those parcels. So at the image in front of you, you have a before and after that shows the current residential zone. And then on the right-hand image, you have these select parcels becoming red to reflect the Bay Street Limited Business District. One of the parcels that, again, came to my attention this afternoon as parcel 190-120, it is the right-hand uppermost red parcel. That one, yep.
On the corner of Bay Street?
If one goes back several decades, that property was owned C2. It's then very clear that there was discussion with the planning board about that parcel becoming Bay Street Limited Business District. It is the, a original storage unit lot of Wolfboro. Property owner is here this evening and is the one who raised this question to me. The strikeout language, I'm sorry, the proposed text this evening inadvertently excludes that parcel, even though it shows red- that parcel, even though it shows red on the zoning layer. What I can find going back in the GIS records is somewhere around 2018, it became village residential. That's what shows on the zoning map in the conference room. So, for fun this afternoon, the property owner and I went through three town annual reports, and I went through a couple of others earlier today, and I can find that the Planning Board never recommended, nor did the town ever vote, to make that parcel village residential. So, how the map was changed to reflect that, I don't know. It also, by definition, does not meet, according to the district boundaries, village residential is to those parcels served by water and sewer, which that parcel is not. So, the one suggestion, and I don't believe this is significant, about nine lines into the proposed text on sheet 19 of 20, we need to go to the, we need, I need to insert that parcel, 190, 120, into that language. It was inadvertently omitted, because the language above it is based on a change that was never actually voted on.
Simply, okay.
You're not rezoning it or changing its zoning, you're actually correcting the record to adequately reflect the zoning of that parcel.
That's exactly where, Tavis.
What's that?
Show us where. In the text, where you want it inserted?
Oh, it's, let me see, one, two, three, four, five, six line down, you see 190-12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, that's where it starts walking up that line. And then we need to extend that up to include 190, 120. So, it's going to be in the middle, it's going to be in between 17, see, and then it has 17, 18, 19, and 20 after that.
It says 17.
Then it's north along the eastern boundary of 17, 18, 19, and 20.
We're inserting and 20 after 19.
Correct. 19 will get moved over before the and, and then it will say, comma, and 20. And then, then southwesterly, and that's where it turns the corner.
Okay, well, I mean, it seems that this is okay, because the property is already owned Bay Street, according to this map that you just gave us.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And the property owner is aware of this and has...
Yes.
...read to this, is in the room?
For some more information, storage is not a permitted use in the Bay Street Limited. It is in the Pine Street, or the Pine Hill Road. But it's over on lot coverage for Pine Hill Road. I believe the applicant may be submitting a petition or requesting the board consider changing that zoning in the future to Pine Hill Road, so that the use is permitted, even though its existing condition is over on coverage. But that's not something for the board to discuss tonight, that's something for the applicant and perhaps, or the property owner, the property owner and I to discuss options for moving forward.
So, when you were researching this, you found that at one point it was in Bay Street and not in Pine Hill?
It went from C2 to Bay Street Limited, and the discussion at that time was, I go Bay Street, the use is non-conforming, but I can add 25% to a non-conforming, or I could be in Pine Hill, but then I can't add anything, because I'm over on lot coverage. But I think there's a number of things in both zones that don't quite work.
Let's solve the problem that we're faced with right now in getting it into the proper zone, getting it into the street. All right, and could the property owner come to the mic?
Once he gets to the public, yeah.
We're going to open the public hearing once the conversation's... Okay.
That's all I have.
Is everybody all set? Okay, I'll open the public hearing on this. If you'd like to speak, now's your opportunity to do so.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chris Pongratson, and the owner of the property in discussion. I just wanted to point out that, Tavis, I think you misspoke, you referred to it as 190 lot 120, it's 190 lot 20.
Oh, yeah, I have it written as 20, but I may have said, okay.
You said 120, I think, a couple of times, I was just concerned we get that right. But that's all, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, anyone else want to speak to this issue? Okay. All right, then, I entertain a, well, is everybody comfortable with moving ahead with this, since it shows on the map?
Have we closed the public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, I think the, we're rectifying a mistake, and the property owner is here and in favor of the rectification, and we are aware that there will be a subsequent rectification of some sort that doesn't affect the current proceedings.
Okay.
So, aside from this article, what about the map in the conference room? Are we going to upgrade that thing, or do we have money to, or what's the story?
I, I know who made the map, I don't know what information was used, I don't know if there was any fact-checking after that.
Should we get rid of it, so it doesn't confuse people, or what's, I mean?
I think it's a good reference point, we just, it's a reminder to me to make sure I look at everything very thoroughly and not take the map at face value. I have a feeling that was, that's been an issue for quite some time. There are other issues with that map, but it's a helpful, quick reference.
And we work on updating?
We can work on updating the map, I don't know if we have the ability to get an official zoning map ready for a warrant article vote this year. But yes, I'm...
I doubt, doubt that we do, it took a long time to get the one that we have, it was updated. Okay.
I can get an updated print, yes, but the message to the viewing public, listening public, everything, the online zoning map is a suggestion, not gospel. The printed maps are not adopted as official maps, they're a guide, not the final word. We will get there.
Okay, all right, so the public hearing is closed, and I entertain a motion to move this to the town warrant in 2022.
Oh, moved.
And seconded?
As amended.
As amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, all right.
I didn't...
Okay. No, 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 we don't have minutes. Okay, the discussion items, Tavis, you want to add one?
Not done yet.
I wanted to add one?
Yes. The one that we talked about that's going to the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, sorry. There is a property owner on North Line Road, just past the wastewater treatment plant, water plant, sorry. He has requested a waiver from the Board of Selectmen to allow building on a Class VI roadway. The way the process works is the Board of Selectmen received the request, the Planning Board has then provided the opportunity to comment, and those comments are then passed back up to the Board of Selectmen, who will consider granting the waiver. The project, as I understand it, at this point, is simply an extension of the MED electric lines and related poles, at the applicant's expense to their property, so that they can exist without a generator. That is the source of the waiver request. However, once the waiver is granted, the property owner would be able to build and use the property like a residential property, even though there are no immediate plans to do so. So, the property is 400 feet from the end of a Class V road, or the Class V portion of North Line Road. A short stretch of passable Class VI road, and once you get past this property, it is full of some of the largest boulders I've ever seen in a roadway. It's effectively impassable. From a planning perspective, I don't have any suggestions for the Planning Board as a reason not, just that the Selectmen not grant the waiver, but it is the Planning Board's opportunity to comment on development on a Class VI road. Structure that's there now, politely put, is a three-season structure at best, it is very small, about 12 by 20 maybe. It does have an existing foundation on it, they are pursuing getting a septic plan, having a septic system installed. There's a well on the property.
Natural Resources Committee, Master Plan, recommending absolutely no development on Class VI roads, against that policy. Against what the Master Plan proved, indicated. May be a small change, but when you have a small change, a slightly larger change next in line, therefore, something which I would very much oppose, against what the Master Plan is.
Also, a memo from the Board of Selectmen that we had a few, that said development on Class VI roads, I recall.
But is this really development where it's already existing?
Say that again?
Is this developing because it's already existing? And the way I understand it, it's existed for a very long time.
I think that's kind of a key here, is the fact that there's an existing camp there now, and their wish is to simply get power and do it to make it, as these folks are getting older, to have electricity there, rather than have to run a generator whenever they come up to it to stay there. Obviously, they run the well, and I don't know if, I don't know off the top of my head if it's septic, has a pump system in it or not, or if it's gravity feed, I really don't know. It was more to update the camp a little bit, to make it a little more livable for them right now, that's all that's in front of us. I think that factor, we have to consider, to start just taking a raw piece of land and going for a building permit to build something on a, on an empty piece of land on a Class VI road, this is something that's already existing there that they want to do a small improvement on, and yes, it does open up possibilities and stuff, but that's obviously, that's not in front of us right now, so...
So, I mean, I'm happy to put together comments from the Planning Board to the Board of Selectmen, remind them of what the Master Plan says and what their memo said.
I think we have, sorry.
We don't, we don't have any town regulation against it, it's...
No, but there, but the Master Plan, in addition to the National Natural Resources also, it's in the future land use chapter, so...
So, I would remind the board that the Master Plan is not a regulating document. The controlling aspect in this point is the statute 67441. I'm happy to add the comments from the Master Plan to the Selectmen, suggesting, look, there's a reason behind 67441, and it's furthered by the Master Plan, so please consider that in consideration of the waiver.
Could it be for this existing house only?
The waiver would go to the property.
It goes with the...
Yeah, and the statute provides a mechanism for appeal, and close that out by saying no further permits on this particular Class VI road, only this one and no further. You can't do that, and I'd also ask the board to remember, North Line Road, when did it become a Class VI road? I think that, I have a memory of driving North Line Road, right the way to Federal Corners Road, that had been closed up since I got here. That's not all that long ago, and I think it was closed up deliberately to stop it from being a through, a through road. It was not exact, not as if it's, quote, "a naturally occurring Class VI road that just fell out of use, because nobody lived there anymore and it became a rocky place." Those boulders that are put there were put there specifically to stop anybody going any further.
Or providing an adequate challenge to traversing by the end.
Or an adequate challenge to try to go around them, but the point is that this, in this particular case, North Line Road is a Class VI road, is sort of an artificial, in my opinion, Class VI road created by the town, up throughput, through, through traffic.
And it's, it's interesting...
...prohibition on Class VI roads. In the Master Plan, it's sort of, it is a good idea, and it's well intentioned, but it cannot trump a state statute, which allows for development on, the Selectmen...
Interestingly, immediately past this cabin, where the police department has a range, gun range, what have you. So, it really becomes a little, a little debatable on where that Class VI line is to me, because clearly the town has to maintain that road to get them past the property, so if you've done any maintenance, is it not in fact a five? But, I digress. At this point, it was suggested they pursue the waiver, solely for the purposes of putting in the utility poles.
Okay, my, my question then would be, is the town actually maintaining that road for the pistol range?
I have not required...
Because, because if they are, Class VI roads are not maintained.
Correct.
And therefore, if the town is actually, facto, maintaining it so people can get there, then it's not, it is not a Class VI road.
Was North Line Road ever officially discontinued? Or turned it into a Class VI road?
What makes it a Class VI road is you drive past the water plant, there's a sign that says Class VI road. That's not what technically makes it a Class VI road, but that's where the sign is, that's what's driving this.
Was the road officially discontinued by the town?
I don't know that, Mike. I do know that one of the requirements to become a Class VI road is for a period, I believe it's a period of five years of no maintenance being done on the road. It would, is one of the requirements for it to become, or to be a Class VI road.
Okay.
And also, I would just want to point out too, I believe that, as Tavis said, correct me if I'm wrong, this is, this application right now is just for a permit to run the power in. The applicant or the lot owner would have to come in for a electrical permit, I believe, to do any electrical work in the cabin.
And, and that's the reason behind the waiver. The town doesn't need a waiver to install utility poles in the right-of-way, but 67441 precludes you from pulling the electrical permit to connect to the power, because you're not allowed to issue a building permit.
Yeah, okay.
So, that's, that's what's driving the whole waiver. Unfortunately, you can't say, we're going to grant you a waiver solely for an electrical permit and nothing else, the waiver allows you to build on the parcel.
Okay, so for, for the purposes of what we're trying to do tonight, we need to send a note back to the Selectmen, right?
So, what, what I...
Can we include the fact that the Master Plan does have two chapters where it actually prohibits development? I mean, I think it's important to pass that on to them, so...
And if I can find the B O, the Selectmen memo suggesting the same, I'll remind them of that. I don't know where to look for that memo, but between the Master Plan and that, there is a history of not permitting Class VI development, yes.
Not recommending. Master Plans can't permit, but you can only recommend.
Okay, so...
So, I'm willing to put together a memo to that effect in the morning.
Okay.
Sign it, or we can represent it tomorrow when we're at the meeting.
Yeah, okay. All right, very good.
We also do have a representative who has been privy to this conversation.
Yes.
Yes, right.
Technically, the board is to provide written comment to the Selectmen for their
That, okay with you?
Yep.
I think that, I think that property is a historical property out there that, if I'm not mistaken, that was the, that was the Stagecoach Road to Portland, Maine, at one time.
A long way to get there now.
Roundabout.
On your mountain bike.
Okay, so, you want, I, I think we probably need a motion, then.
A motion to direct the planner to synthesize the Planning Board's comments for distribution to the Selectmen.
Okay, so, I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
Okay, so, the motion has been made and seconded.
Time for discussion.
Okay, yeah.
Your synthesis indicates that at least one board member felt in this... Your synthesis indicates that at least one board member felt in this particular instance, the board's disinterest in this permit is not unanimous.
Disinterest in the memo or disinterest in the waiver?
Disinterested in the substance of the memo. The board, one member does not agree with the, with the other members of the board.
Two.
Particular case on this particular Class 6 road.
Two.
Two. Two members.
Okay, well, what, what are we?
The, the memo was going to say something to the effect of, your Board of Selectmen, the planning board reviewed the proposed waiver application for tax map, this and this on Northline Road.
The majority.
The majority of the board.
Yeah.
Discussed and wanted comments related to master plan chapter X and Y. Along with a recollection of a prior Board of Selectmen memorandum, all of which suggest no further development on Class 6 roads. At least two members of the board disagreed with the generation of these comments for you to consider. But in totality, this represents the commentary for the planning board as to the application for waiver, 7441.
Okay.
Sorry, Terry, I'll try and say it that way tomorrow.
Hey, so there's been a motion made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
I'll abstain.
An abstention. Okay, so.
You've been so.
That vote was unanimous.
Unanimous vote for the memo.
Yeah.
Not unanimous.
Yeah.
As long as, as long as this board knows we've had a discussion, they can, they're going to make their decision.
Mm-hmm, great.
Have our input.
Okay, just one other item I need to bring you up to date on, on the short-term rental thing. Okay, we had a meeting October 18th. And the committee decided that we needed to go through the actual purpose statement for the generation of the committee. So we considered the purpose for the committee. We decided that we need to differentiate between short-term and long-term rental. This was discussed by the committee. It was determined that a maximum of 31 days seemed to make sense. The majority of the committee agreed with this statement, with one member not in favor. To determine the impact. Yes, I'm sorry.
Maximum for a short-term rental is 31?
Yes. Well, th- these are referrals, these were reporting back to the planning board. Let's see, the determine, the impact short-term rentals may have on the town government, the community and property owners. It was agreed that there didn't seem to be a problem based on the meeting with the town officials. The community seemed to thrive over the summer with many tourists. Meetings with the property owners were very split, some in favor of short-term rentals and some saying, we need to get rid of them. But that, it pretty much, I think, was in both directions. Others mentioned that they rent their properties in the summer to help pay the tax. And as to the determination, this leads to commercialization of residential neighborhoods. The committee agreed that the memo from our attorney indicated that a residential property owners have a right to rent their residential property. There, there's nothing in our ordinance that prohibits that. There was a member that did not agree with this statement and felt a did lead to commercialization of the neighborhood. Has the integrity of the zoning ordinance been upheld? We allow bed and breakfast, are allowed in many residential zones, boarding houses are not. Inns and motels are allowed in commercial zones and some pre-exist the, the ordinance. And dormitories are allowed in, in the VR. It seems that the regulations are in place and should be followed. It was mentioned that all complaints are investigating and that there are many obstacles in doing this. The issue of the need for people to follow the fire code is important and does not seem to be in place. It was stated that due to the split of the committee in the, it was difficult to make any progress. So, let's see. And Tavis then mentioned he'd talked to the attorney, who said this is a land use issue and it is difficult to enforce. The attorney also mentioned that if someone has done this in the past, no enforcement can be taken against the property owner. It was mentioned that grandfathering is difficult to prove and there is no sunset provision for this. Tavis also mentioned that the police are using their enforcement techniques in the best interest of the town. The committee agreed that Wolfboro has a housing issue and this is an issue that requires some attention by the town officials. And then it was further agreed that the committee needs to disband until we have a better idea of how some of the approaches taken by other communities are working for them. Then John and I received another issue about freedom and they're seeking to limit short-term rentals. So there are several, we can see how it works out. So that's the report. Committee members have anything to?
Yeah, there, there, the freedom one was, they wanted to limit to renting 45 days a year. And to Peter's question, the 31 days, that was based on the state of New Hampshire Rooms and Meals Tax basis, how we came up with that.
Right. So it's back here to the planning board. And we don't have to make a decision. I was just letting you, letting you know, I think I sent you all the, the minutes.
On hold.
It's sort of now up to the, the planning board. Do they think we should do anything? Anyway, that's my report. Anybody?
I'll just jump in really briefly. I don't, don't mean to keep the board any later than we've already gotten. Kearsarge Lighting District up in Conway has just one, one case and had another case dismissed against it. Zoning prohibits short-term rentals. Superior Court Carroll County has found in their favor that their zoning ordinance, although it was written whether it was the planning board, still nonetheless prevails and that one particular short-term rental owner fails in his motion. The district's prohibition overturned. So clearly, there's a, there's a move in courts to look at this issue and find in favor of towns have already defined what a short-term rental is and prohibited that.
Anybody else? I don't know if we should put this on the agenda again for another discussion.
That's up to the board. I didn't hear anything come out of the short-term rental committee that would put this on the front burner any, anytime prior to March.
Okay, well, there's, there's a lot of interest out, out there in the community, so. I, I think some, some folks, we think we should be taking some action, but basically, what we got into was the fact that to put something in place would take a lot of staff time and everything in order to.
It would be, going back a couple of short-term rental committees, it would be very simple to make an amendment to the definition of dwelling to not include transient, but in the definition of transient.
Right.
One, one and done warrant article. The problem then becomes, we have no enumeration of who has established short-term rentals prior to that law passing. What becomes difficult with the enforcement is proving that someone didn't have it prior to.
Right, so, so we could move ahead this year with the addition of transient.
We can come up with a definition of transient. I would recommend we get strong legal counsel as to whether we look at 185 days, 35 days, 50 days, 12 days, et cetera.
Why is a grandfathering issue?
Everybody who's got one right now is right in.
The current definition of dwelling does not preclude short-term.
Yeah, that's, that's the problem. I, I would strongly suggest, let me, let me just point this out. There are a number of court cases going through Carroll County Superior Court right now around the issue of what towns can do to regulate short-term rentals. And let them pay for their lawyers and let them fight it out in the court cases. And when the courts have come up with a bundle of legal doctrines that discuss short-term rentals, let's have our lawyer look at them and drag out whatever is useful that we can use to regulate, if that's what this board thinks we should do, short-term rentals.
Well, in, in the meantime, the, this board has been looking at how to address the workforce elderly affordable housing angle. And it's very clear from the already exhausted Portsmouth case, that if the board were to look at allowing workforce affordable or elderly housing with density bonuses, if it were clear to preclude transient uses similar to hotels, motels, et cetera, that is conclusive enough for the board to put that restriction on, so that you don't allow the density, whether it be short, a 10-year period or forever, for an affordable housing project that once affordable housing project that all became hotel via short-term rentals.
As long as we keep, as long as we keep the two issues separate, then the principal focus should be on solving, as best we can, the housing shortage issue here in town. And realize that everybody currently who's running a short-term rental is grandfathered in, no matter what we say subsequently. It's kind of like shutting the barn door when the horse has gone.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but the new, the new horses that will be allowed in with a density bonus can be reserved for long-term rentals, so that we can, we can solve the, the housing problem that we have for people who can't afford.
Yeah, going forward, yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It's, it's not completely out of the barn. It's a new area.
Correct, but I think, you know, one of the obstacles Wolfboro has going forward is plastered on the major entrances to town. It's the oldest vacation town. But all but suggest transient.
Okay, all right, so it seems the consensus is to hold tight, get more information and continue the discussion next year.
And.
Yeah, right, yes. Which is what we're doing.
And I think that it, it should be emphasized that we're trying to make a policy which is legal and fair to want to rent and are the renter.
And if that's going to happen, define transient now.
I think, I think, I think transient needs to be defined, but the Working Stiff case was very clear. It precluded transient uses, but not limited to hotels, motels.
Do whatever we want. Transient, but I define transient so that we.
The reason, right, the reason I picked that one is that's already been to court and.
Yeah, but the only reason that prevailed was because of the word transient. That was the language of the plaintiff. Court found, already included the word. Rental in that case is, this doesn't really address the wider issue of short-term rentals. Cases that are coming out of Carroll County right now are, your ordinance says no SDRs. Someone comes along, I want to put an SDR in, they're going to lose.
I think a definition of transient needs to happen, but.
I, I wouldn't hang my, my prohibition on SDRs on the language transient.
I, I agree.
I want to have it more specific, no SDRs.
And it, it's two separate, I agree, it's two separate conversations. For term rentals and housing shortage. So if we want the housing problem solved, possibly increase allowed density to whatever number we decide on here in town. Think that transient allowed, defined, want, not allow it, it's new. Density bonus areas, we can separate it out.
So at the next work session, just as I come back, the last, previous work session, a question about the C1 district and potential changes to the density. Lot of discussion about limiting short-term transient, whatever you call it, existing housing stock, et cetera. So at the next work session, I will have added to that discussion some additional pieces for the board to consider, should we want to move forward with that.
Okay, all right, that sounds like a good plan. Did you want to say anything about the charrette?
I, I do. Thank you to all that were able to attend. I understand why some couldn't. It was a very good exercise. All I'm going to say tonight is that the PowerPoint that was presented at the charrette is on the planning board page and the heritage page, if you want to go through it. Pleasure. There are lots of things to come up. I will tacitly pat myself on the back, many at the charrette that believe 30 units makes it exactly the direction that district should be going. That came out a couple of different ways in the brochure, so it was helpful to have some reinforced that way. But to that end, they were primarily focused on de-emphasizing auto-centric design, including, you know, improving bike and pedestrian multimodal connections to downtown, specifically between the project area of Lainer Street in downtown, but also throughout downtown, so. Everyone loved the town. Everyone loved the building they were in. Everyone was very complimentary to everyone that helped organize and pull it off. Getting the report, I believe, by the end of the year. That might help set the stage for some next steps for the planning. A lot of consistency between, I, I don't think any of the 21, this is the largest charrette plan New Hampshire's ever done. There were 21 participants that came with their team. I don't think any of them necessarily read the master plan, but all of the things they pulled out are consistent with the memo. Yes, there are some practical difficulties. There was lots of groaning in various town departments about, oh, we can't do any of that. It might look great on paper. I think it will be helpful to, planning board to say, look, this can be done, because the report not only says, here's a pretty picture, but it outlines how other communities have been able to implement it. But it really does lay out a, a storybook on how you get here to there. I believe so.
And the Heritage Commission will be discussing the mass, the charrette at the next meeting, which is on the 15th.
Yes.
Okay. So, no minutes?
I would, yes. We'll do, I'll bring minutes back at the next meeting.
All right, so.
I have.
Entertain a motion.
One question?
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Just a question. Is this the only board that meets at 7 o'clock? Does every other board in Wolfboro meet at 6:30 in the evening?
I, I know the, the selectmen.
I, I believe planning and zoning boards are the only ones.
Just a question that maybe we should slide up to 6:30 like everybody else and then we wouldn't be stuck like this. Something to think about. I don't know what process we have to go through to make a move, but it does make sense.
The calendar has been set, the calendar you voted on this time last year set the calendar. Very easy to go into the town calendar and move everything up to 6:30.
Just a thought.
I'd be happy.
January 1st would be a nice time to do it.
Right. Or what time?
Don't they meet during the day sometimes?
Yeah, I, I think that's later in the year.
So if, if the board's interested in that, I can look into it and see if there's any conflicts for the rest of this year.
Okay.
And otherwise, we can look at doing that as a new rule moving forward.
In the summertime, that's when I'm out working. By the time I get home and clean up and.
up and get here, that works good for me, 7 o'clock, sorry.
Can we do a seasonal schedule? Oh, now you're getting fancy.
I think you need to pick a schedule.
Food for thought, just because we seem to go late.
Yeah, I know.
You know?
We talk too much.
Okay, but, you know, generally, we usually finish at 9:00. I mean, we start at 7:00 and finish at 9:00.
Other things the board can, it's difficult on a night like tonight where there were four public hearings, but the board can also have a practice of saying, "I'm going to get into discussion items or other things if it's already next time."
Right. Yes, that's true, we could do that. Okay. All right, but, I mean, 9 o'clock is okay, isn't it?
I stay up till 1:30, I'm just saying, in general. And for, and for other people that were here, you know, they were here at 35, waiting patiently, they were ready to go, you know?
I mean, I think we could politely request that the chair or the co-chair limit the meeting to 9 o'clock, losing time.
Where that puts you in jeopardy is if you have a series of public hearings that's been noticed for that date, and you don't go at least to the process of complete, open the hearing and continue it, the town then incurs the cost of renaissance.
I think we were done by 9 o'clock with those.
Yes, we were.
Oh, yeah.
It's just a thought that, you know, we're waiting and waiting and waiting to start at 7:00, when everybody else usually starts at 6:30, that's all.
Is probably the one that has the longest drive home in between, therefore I don't make it. To me, it really makes no difference whether it starts at 11:00.
As a point of contrast, I remember in the early 2000s, we would be at it until 11 o'clock at night.
Yes, I remember some of those sitting in the audience, waiting for my turn and having to wait till next month.
Yes, zoning board has opened hearings at 11:30, so it's.
My zoning board, that is, we would be at.
Okay, all right.
With that.
You're leaping up already, right?
Somebody make a motion to adjourn in second.
I can invite Peter.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Who motioned?
Mike.